Good evening. My name is Barnett Overett. I chair the Town of Foxborough zoning Board of Appeals, and I'm calling to order the May 20, 2021 public meeting of the board, including the public hearings that the board will conduct. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12, 2020, that suspends certain provisions of the open meeting law and subsequent orders that impose limits on the number of individuals that may gather indoors. We are conducting this meeting virtually and entirely by Zoom. Public comments this evening will be accepted during the public hearings. To offer comments by Zoom, you will be asked to use the button in Zoom that is labeled Raise Hand. This will alert us that you wish to speak. We will individually bring you into the meeting. If you are planning to speak tonight, you may want to take a moment to find the Zoom button, make sure that you are in a quiet space, and have a working microphone. Also, please be sure that your Zoom window includes your name. If you are participating by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you will not be speaking tonight, we recommend and request that you not use Zoom, but instead watch this meeting on Foxborough Cable Access by cable television, their YouTube channel, or Facebook Live. In the event of any technical problems, the meeting will be paused until such issues are resolved. If the technical problems cannot be resolved in a timely manner, the meeting will be adjourned. The matters on our agenda that have not been considered will be continued to the board's next meeting. That meeting currently is scheduled for June 3, 2021. All votes that we take tonight will be done by roll call. At this time, I wish to recognize the other members of the board who are present this evening: David Brown, Kurt Yegian, and Lorraine Brew. Mr. Brown and I are regular members of the board. Mr. Yegian and Ms. Brew are associate members. All of us will participate in the matters that we are to consider this evening. However, only three members are authorized to vote during tonight's scheduled public hearings. Mr. Brown and I, as regular members of the board, will vote on each of the public hearings. I will appoint Mr. Yegian or Ms. Brew to vote on the other public hearings. A unanimous vote of the voting members is required in order to approve the matters that are subject to a public hearing. Finally, I wish to recognize Diana Gray, the board's administrative assistant, and Barry Ringwald, the Town of Foxborough's Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer. The time being, 7:00 PM, Mark S. Longo, trustee, seeks a modification of Special Permit Number 2021-03 to construct a detached residential garage at 44 Green Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District. Jeff, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Jeff Lovely, representing the Longo family. We were before you in March requesting a special permit to build a detached residential garage. You were kind enough to grant that special permit back in April, number 2103, as Barney called out. The family sort of refined and improved the location of the garage after further consideration and also updated some of the plans for the garage. So we're actually requesting a modification of the location, and we'll take a look at the revised site plan. And we're looking for a slight layout change to the garage. And we have submitted some elevations that we will show in earlier today, and I'm not even sure if Barney and Diana received them. I have some additional floor plans as well, which show the dimensions of the building. One of the things we're looking for, just to clarify the height of the building, is to seek... One of your conditions was that the building couldn't be more than 20.4 feet above grade. And we're requesting, just to avoid any problems with that, that we define that as 21 feet above the top of the slab. And it actually, and I'll show you the dimension plans. It is very, very close to that. So I don't know if the board would entertain maybe adding six inches to that, just for a little bit of leeway. So I'm going to try to share screen. Hopefully, maybe Diana can back me up if I flame out again.
I think Diana is on mute.
I have it queued up, ready to go, Jeff, if you can't do it.
Okay, is my revised... Is the revised site plan showing now? Okay, then. Would you pull it up for me, then? Sorry. I do have it on my screen.
I just put it up on this screen.
Okay. So the actual dimensions are called out on the... in the paperwork. But basically, this turns the building, pushes it a little bit back closer to Route 495, puts the garage doors on the Route 495 side, and just gives it a little bit of a better orientation, leaves a little bit of a better backyard for the house, and gives a little bit more room in terms of getting back there and parking without really interfering with the house. One of the things that's not in my petition is that... And I put it in the petition, it's not on the plans. You know, where that thin driveway connects to the parking and turning area, we are also requesting that there would be a little bit of what I'd call sort of a rounding radius, just to assist vehicles. You know, nobody really builds driveways in that particular form, you know, with that rectangular orientation.
Jeff, where would you... Can you point to where you'd want to put that radius?
So where the thin part of the driveway broadens out with the rectangular parking area right in front of the garage, just a little bit of an arc, you know, as almost all of us probably have on our driveways, to just make sure that you're not kind of cutting the corner and driving over the grass. So I call it sort of a small turning radius that we'd, you know, try to add there. And I would point out that the two neighbors that supported us last time are also... We submitted letters indicating that they've seen this revised plan and that they are okay with the revised location and still in support.
Go ahead.
So Diana, would you mind pulling up the... I guess the dimensioned floor plan? Okay. So this floor plan shows, if you look at the lines on the side, shows that the peak of the roof, and I believe these are measured from the top of the slab, is actually just a little bit less than 21 feet. So that's... We would be requesting in terms of the height of the building, and again, just to avoid anything that would come up if we're a little bit over. I would like it if we could say that the building could be no higher than 21 feet 6 inches above the top of the slab. That would just avoid any sort of onsite issues. And then, Diana, could you pick up... Could you go to the next page of the floor plans, please? The one that shows... One of the other changes is... Is there one that shows the floor plan sort of looking down? Yeah, that one. That shows that one of the porches is proposed to be an entryway to the garage because they simply didn't need as much exterior storage as was provided in the first iteration of the plans, which had two 8-foot wide porches running the entire length of the building. So that is approximately 20 feet by approximately 8 feet, which would include... Which would increase the interior size, does not increase the overall footprint. And then there did sort of be a covered entryway, which is the remaining approximately 10 feet by 8 feet of that particular porch. And Diana, if you could... Sorry.
I have a question about this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I think it's... I just for orientation. The enclosed section, does that face the house, or does that face the back? Can you clarify that one?
Yes, I can. It faces the woods.
Okay.
It's not the house side, it's the wood side. I guess what I call the woods. It's...
But that's to the furthest rear.
Yeah. So it's not visible from the house.
Yeah. No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood what I was looking at.
Yep.
It was either that or the other way, you know?
Understood.
So Jeff, you said the footprints, the total footprint is the same.
Yes.
Basically, the interior square footage is going to increase 20 by 8, something like that.
Right, yes, just about.
And... And you're looking for a little... Little bit higher roof peak.
Yeah, just to kind of clarify that. Yep. So the slight change to the interior layout, slight change to the language regarding the height, and then approval of the new location. I believe that's really what we're looking for. The rest of the conditions don't need any changes, I don't believe. You know, the no water and the no commercial and all of that.
Yeah.
Kurt, Lorraine, any questions?
Lorraine's on mute, too.
We already discussed the...
Everybody.
We already discussed the materials of the shed being, you know, inconsistent with the house and...
Yeah, that was one of the conditions that we imposed when we issued the special permit, so that'll continue.
Okay. Actually, just briefly, Diana, would you mind popping up a couple of those, the pictures, if possible?
Pictures of the email?
There were some pictures submitted...
With the application.
With the application, yeah. Which basically, all they do is they just show the... Not the floor plan. There's actually some elevations that were part of the application. But they show that the appearance of the building now matches the appearance of the house. Right, that was it, right there, yeah.
Can you show that other one that you just flashed by? I noticed something. I guess the other side of... Whoops. So it's not a full length that where you're closing the side off. It's not the full length of the building, it's...
Right. It's approximately of that 30-foot side.
Okay, that's right. That was 30. You said talking 20 or so.
20 is closed, yes.
I'm good.
Okay, any... Lorraine?
I didn't have any questions, Barney.
Okay, so... I don't know. Mr. Longo is here with us. I don't know if you have any comments that you want to... He was with us.
I am, yeah. Just, yeah. I guess not. It's, like I said, it really... I think it's... My younger brother's here also. I think it's 5'8". It was a 5'8" inch move from the original drawing. So it really... We didn't move it that much. We just... It was, I guess it was fine tuning. We were trying to make a deadline to get to the first board meeting, and we, you know, we roughed it out. We're not surveyors, so we roughed it out a little bit incorrectly. And the only thing on the height is, this is a... We get the drawings, and they told us that the height will be exactly that. We're just quite frankly terrified. It might be off by a few inches, and so we just wanted to say, geez, you know, we don't plan on changing anything. We want it to be exactly that height. But seeing we don't control that, we were just saying, geez, can... What if something, I don't know, the material's a little thicker than we thought? I just, that's all we were looking at. We were just afraid that we would run afoul of the law and not really, you know, and have to go through this again. And that's all we were looking at. But we have no intention of changing anything other than what Jeff mentioned, a slight movement of the building and closing in that one side, which I'm understanding that the space that we... Original floor plan included the overhangs as if they were spaced because there was a roof on it. So that's all I have to add.
Okay, we have two letters. They're identical. So I'll just read one of them. The first... Or they state, "Dear Zoning Board Committee, we have seen the revised plot plan of Longo's barn and approved this modification." One letter is signed by Donna Richardson and Gary Richardson, and they are the butters at 42 Green Street. And the second letter is signed by Marty Briggs and Maria Briggs. And they're at 59 Green? Is that correct?
I think they may be... What are we... We're 44, they may... They're on 42, they're directly on the same side of the street next to them.
Right, but the Briggs, are they also on Green?
Yes, they are. So they're actually, if you look at the house from the street, they're our next-door neighbor to our left.
Okay.
Yeah, and they have the property. Their property is contiguous to our property. So they would be looking at the... If they could see it, there's enough woods between it. But if they could see, they'd be looking at the backside of the building with the windows, not the garage doors. The garage doors face the highway.
Okay, fair enough. Um... Anybody else have any other questions? So why don't we close the public portion?
So Barney, we got Barry out there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I noticed Barry's in the audience, or...
Yep, I'm sorry. Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Want to have a motion to close the public portion, Dave?
Yeah, I'll move that we close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. So, I mean, this is just a minor change. I think it's actually an improvement, in a sense. Not that we had any problems with the first one. I think we can handle it by, you know, approving the modification and deleting the first three conditions that we imposed in the first decision and replacing them with the following. And Jeff, if I get any of the numbers wrong, please correct me. So the first condition would be, "The proposed garage shall be detached structure with a footprint that shall not exceed 1,440 square feet. The interior of the proposed garage shall not exceed 32 feet in width and 30 feet in length with exterior portion porches that shall not exceed 8 feet in width and entryway as shown on the revised garage plans. The height of the proposed garage shall not exceed 21 feet 6 inches above the top of the proposed garage's floor slab." Second condition would be, "The construction and design of the proposed garage shall be in accordance with the revised plans." And third, "The proposed garage shall be situated on the subject property as set forth in the revised plot plan with access to the garage by means of the driveway that is shown therein." Question that I have is, what should we add? Or do we need to add anything about the turning radius that Jeff was talking about?
I don't think it's really necessary, I mean...
Let me ask Barry a question. Would you have any problem with a returning radius? Or do you need something on a plan?
No, I don't see any problem whatsoever, no.
Okay.
Whatever makes sense, you know? Most people have that it makes sense, what he's saying definitely. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Jeff, why don't we leave it that way?
Okay, fair enough.
Just those three conditions. The other conditions remain that we imposed in the first decision remain in effect.
So Barney, one thing, and maybe I missed it. Do we say that there's only to be one... I'm not quite sure how to say it. One side porch enclosure and not two? Because I think what you read said side porch or porches.
Yeah, I said porch with the entryway, but it would be as in accordance with the, you know, the plans that we've been provided. So that would show the, you know, the full porch on one side and the porch and the entryway on the other.
So if they wanted to enclose more of it, they'd have to come talk about it.
In theory, yeah.
Yeah, well...
I mean, it's not going to change... If they wanted to enclose it, it's not going to change the, you know, the square footage, so...
Yeah.
So it would be a minor modification.
Okay.
So any discussion or questions, or...
No.
No.
Do you want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the... Kind of call this a modification, Barney?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the modification subject to adoption of the new plans and also the new location.
And the revised conditions as, you know, as stated.
As stated, and revised conditions as stated.
Second.
Okay. Dave?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. Barney, yes. Jeff, I'll have something for you next week.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, the time being 7:10 PM. An appeal by Normandy Farms Campground pursuant to Section 10.2.2.1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning of a zoning enforcement decision dated April 22, 2021, issued by the Town of Foxborough Building Commissioner and Zoning Enforcement Officer concerning the requested construction of a 30-foot by 50-foot post and beam open-air pavilion for a picnic area at 72 West Street, and if necessary, a special permit pursuant to Section 10.4.2 for the same structure. Properties located in the R40 Residential Zoning District and a Zone 2 Water-Loots Protection Overlay District. The applicant has requested a withdrawal without prejudice. So I have a letter dated May 13, 2021 to the zoning board to whom it may concern, Normandy Farms Campground LLC, request to withdraw from the zoning hearing on May 20, 2021. Sincerely, Christine Daniels. The reason for the withdrawal is that the building permit that initially was the subject, that initially was denied and is the subject of the appeal has since been granted. And I assume that they're probably well on the way to constructing the post and beam pavilion. So motion to allow the withdrawal without prejudice.
I move that we accept the request for withdrawal without prejudice.
Kurt, second, please.
Second.
Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes.
Barney, do we need to make a motion that I can send back the application check? I haven't cashed it.
Oh, yes, I'm glad you mentioned that. So initially, when they filed for the appeal, they did, you know, forward to Diana the requisite, you know, fee that we charge. Now, my own perspective is, you know, we should waive it. I don't think it's necessary for us to... Under the circumstances of this matter, I don't think it's necessary for us to have required them to pay a fee.
I agree.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I move that we return the check that the applicant issued to the town to hear a full petition or a full appeal.
Kurt, second. Okay, Dave?
Yes.
And Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Okay, the time being 7:20 PM. We have the continued public hearing of Lucas C. Sherman, who seeks a variance pursuant to Section 4.1.1, Table 4-1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to allow a side yard setback of 20 feet where 25 feet is required, and a modification for Case Number 89-27 to eliminate or modify Condition Number 1 to allow the footprint of an existing four-family dwelling to be expanded with addition of a fifth dwelling unit. The property located at 41 Sherman Street is in the R15 Residential and Agricultural District and is not located in any restricted overlay district. And I have a letter dated May 15, 2021 regarding Case Number 2021-01. Dear Mr. Overett and Board Members, the applicant, Lucas C. Sherman, respectfully requests the Foxborough Zoning Board of Appeals approval to withdraw without prejudice the application of Case Number 2021-01 concerning the real property located at 41-43 Sherman Street. The applicant continues to work with a new architect and the process of reevaluating the location and design of the proposed addition is becoming more complicated than originally anticipated. At this time, the applicant believes withdrawal without prejudice is in the best interest of the applicant and this board. Thank you for your time and consideration of this request. Very truly yours, Spillane Spillane. Signed by Francis J. Spillane. I think Frank... Yeah, Frank's with us. Do you want to add anything, Frank?
No, it's just been taking them a long time to get with the architect and get moving, and they're looking at different various locations and designs. And I don't think they're going to have anything done really until the end of the summer, beginning of fall at the earliest. So it was my recommendation, and they agreed to withdraw at this point instead of just continuing it for month to month or for a few months.
Anybody have any questions for Frank?
No.
No.
Want to make a motion?
I move that we permit the withdrawal of this petition without prejudice.
Second that.
Dave?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And me, yes. Barney, yes. Great. So maybe we'll see you again, in what, September, October, Frank, or...
Hopefully, yes.
Okay. When Dave gets back, we'll continue. Actually, we're a couple of minutes early, I think, aren't we, Diana?
Yeah, you got three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
So Barney, while we're waiting, and one question I have for you here is, what is the... What is the status of that looks like to be like a half-completed beer garden behind where Waxey used to be?
My understanding is they're supposed to... And Barry could probably say more than me, but my understanding is they're supposed to be opening it on Memorial Day weekend.
Okay.
Is that correct?
The 27th.
So that would be what, next Thursday?
Next Thursday. Yep, seven days from now.
And is that run by the people from Conrad's, or is that a whole different group of people?
It's a whole different group of people. The Shovel Town name. And they actually, the fire station uptown, they're handling that. They're going to be moving into there permanently as Shovel Town.
Great.
So in as much as we haven't gotten together in December for the last two years, maybe we should meet, you know, some Thursday night over there.
That's a great idea. That's what my next question was.
I was over there today. The picnic tables, it's nice, cool, and the trees. That's the place to go, definitely.
Is there even a fire truck outside, right?
Yeah, they have, yeah. They are planning later to have like horseshoe pits and such. All right.
Diana, we at 7:30 yet? My watch is a little bit fast.
I got 7:29.
Okay, you tell me when.
15 seconds.
My phone says 7:30. My phone says seven thirty.
Okay, good. So it's seven thirty P M. Um, we're. Next agenda item is to consider and vote on amendments to the rules and regulations of the Foxborough Zoning Board of Appeals. Um. I guess I've been thinking. For a while now that we needed to um, to update, you know, the rules and regs. And part of it was just getting it in the language that I feel comfortable with. Part of it was to update it to provide some clarity concerning procedural matters. Um, to have the rules and regs, you know, conform to some of our practices. You know, for example, um. We we we've always had the the chairperson read the hearing notice, even though the rules and regs say it's supposed to be done by the clerk, so. You know, to make a change to, you know, to conform to practices. Um, and also to include. Provisions that are applicable to the um, to the signed by law. Um, we've never updated the the current signed by law. Took effect in two thousand fourteen. Um, we've never done anything to update the rules and regs to incorporate. Signed by law issues. So. What I've done is look at a number of the sections that I felt warranted. Um, some change. That doesn't mean there are other sections that that don't warrant change, and a couple of them have been brought to um. To my to my attention. One section that I did not address, and I suspect I may do so over the course of the summer, is is Article five, which deals with um. Comprehensive permits. Um, I also did not make any changes to the section that deals with application fees. Um, Diana did some research. Uh, with respect to that issue, she she looked at. Fee structures in in a number of other other towns. And I think the best thing we can say is we're we're probably within line to where mo- most of most of our other town, most of the other surrounding towns are. We're a little bit higher than some, a little bit less than others, you know, maybe the same on on some issues as as others. But I I don't think that we necessarily need to make any any changes to that, at least at at this point in time. Um, I do have. A handful of small changes that I want to make tonight to um, to what you have on on paper right now. But before I bring those up, let me just ask if anybody has any questions or any specific. Sections they want to discuss or um, just any specific comments or. Questions or what have you.
Okay.
Kurt and Lorraine, anything?
I I think the uh, the changes are helpful. In terms of, you know, just. Getting further explanation and clarification. I think they're good.
So so let me go through the small ones that I that I do have. Um, the first one is on the first page. In section one point oh one B. And what I would suggest is. If before the word members in the first line. And before the word member in the second line, we had the word regular. Um, that's consistent with how we've done it in the past. And my recollection is also required by by staff. In other words, the associate members of board do not have the authority to. To vote on a board's chairperson and vice chairperson and clerk. So this would would clarify that only the regular members, you know, have that have that vote. The second change would be in section one point zero three. And what I'm suggesting is after the words, the vice person. We add performs such responsibilities of the chairperson. As the chairperson may delegate, comma, and and then and then continue. So in other words, if um. For whatever reason. I need to go and speak with the Board of Selectmen, but I can't make that meeting. I can delegate. I can ask David to um, to handle that particular issue with the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, on your behalf, huh?
Yeah, well. Of course, you would have to say yes, but.
Yeah, and that could be a dangerous move on your part, but that's okay.
That's okay. The um. Next small change would be on page three. And it's that paragraph that's sort of uh, two thirds of the way up, the one that begins with a B in parentheses. Where we're talking about appeals under Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty eight, yep. So what I'm suggesting is at the very end, after the word shall be filed with the town clerk. To add with a copy of such appeal provided to the board. The next change is down towards the bottom under the under paragraph E. Um, and that is in the fourth line. To delete the words and and advertising. Diana, do you want to explain? How we handle advertising fees this this these days?
The fees are paid by the um, applicants. We used to just collect a flat fee, but the the fees outpaced what we were collecting, so now we make them pay the actual cost. If there's more than one hearing. I'll divide it among the the number of people. And we only get billed once a month, so. I would know the amount, but I wouldn't have the invoice if the people want to pay by an invoice like this. Hearing tonight, I'm not going to get the invoice until the first week of June. So I have them pay after the fact.
So in other words, advertising fees would would not be a condition to an applicant, application being complete. So again, it would be just to delete those two words and advertising. And the final change that I have would be on the next.
Can I ask one question there on Brian?
Yeah, go ahead.
Since we're not collecting the the advertising fee anymore and they're going straight to the vendors, you know, to the newspapers or whatever themselves. Do we require proof of that, that they've that they've gone to the local paper and done this kind of thing? That do they have to submit any kind of a invoice or something like that?
If they pay by credit card, the uh, the Chronicle will send them a a copy and they usually send it to me.
Okay.
Or the people have the option of bringing a check to me and I will send it in. Or they can send it in themselves. Now that Town Hall is more open, maybe they'll go back to bringing it to me.
Right, okay.
Okay, and the final change that I have is under on page four. Under section two point zero three B. And this section deals with appeals. Under the signed by law. Where the building commissioner has approved or denied a signed permit application. And what I'm suggesting is we. Change forty five days. To thirty days. And that would be consistent with um. With the requirement relative to to appeals on a for a zoning zoning matter.
That makes sense, yeah.
I'm not sure why I put forty five days. Down initially, but when I thought about, when I looked at it, when I was. Preparing for the meeting and and it it just didn't make any sense to me, so. So I think um, I think we're better off with thirty days for consistency purposes. And I think it also, uh, there's really from my perspective, no need for the extra fifteen days. Anybody have anything else? Any questions, any comments? If you want to go through it section by section, I don't think you do. It's just for soon avoid that, but.
Are those thirty days or forty five days? Are they calendar days or or business?
Uh, calendar.
Okay.
Except for holidays.
Okay.
So I I just have a question. I don't think anybody's ever not paid for the advertising, at least not that I'm aware of. So we don't view that as a problem, okay?
No, because they they know they have to pay, you know, they know it has to be paid for. Um, so some people like Frank still give me the check for a hundred dollars and then I just tell them whatever the balance is.
Well, I all I can think, I I guess it's not a, if it's not an asset. I just think of the um. Applicant who's not happy with the decision.
Hmm.
And hasn't paid yet. But. It's not huge money, I suppose, and uh.
But but Diana, in in that situation, the the applicant is contracting with the with the newspaper. So if the applicant has not paid. I would assume that the news, it would be the newspaper's responsibility to try to collect and not ours.
No, all the ads are placed under our zoning board account. They can't place the ads themselves.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, it's the board's responsibility to advertise and to notify others.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that way, Diana, if somebody didn't advertise, you would know about that then.
Yeah, so it's I I write up the hearing notice, I send it to the newspaper, the newspaper tells me how much it is. So I know in advance how much it's gonna be. I just don't have a actual bill for the person because they only generate it once a month.
Got it, okay.
Well, it will happen once and then we'll figure out something else, but. Uh, I just think of, well, well. You had a real complicated ad, it's not gonna happen, you know, it's that, you know, it was very expensive because it was one of these. Thousand word. Situations, that's expensive. But that's.
We do have, we do have an advertising budget, so if, you know, if someone really had a beef. I can. Take it out of that because we don't really use much else in our budget except postage and. Envelope.
Diana, are you using the same procedure with the Planning Board and Conservation Commission?
Um. Yeah, planning board's done the same way. Conservation, the bills don't aren't that that expensive because they only advertise once. We all do it twice, planning and zoning, that's why ours cost. But they do the same thing. I it's it's they each get billed after the fact.
Mm hmm. And you have any problems on the planning book side?
No, not really.
All right. Well, I say leave it alone.
So. Do we want to take a vote on the um. Proposed revisions to the um, rules and regs?
Same, I move that we. Approve the. Rules and regulations. Subject to the. Amendments.
Second.
That have been proposed, I guess is really what it is, right? We've got the original document here and the the add-ons that you put in and.
Mm hmm. Okay, uh, Lorraine, second it?
Second, please.
Okay, uh, Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Kurt? Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt's on mute.
Yes, yeah. Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So thank you. Um, Diana, what I'll do is I'll. Send you a copy with those words in there, so you'll have exact. You don't have to look at my handwriting. And um, as I indicated, I probably will take a look at the comprehensive permit. Portion. At some point over the summer. Um, and I know that from a wording standpoint, it needs some changes. I'm not sure if it needs any changes from a substance standpoint, but I want to go through them. And and make whatever changes are necessary. Okay, the next item, well, general business, uh, next item is to discuss application procedures. As you may recall, I mentioned at the last meeting. That um, Barry had requested. That the. Zoning board application. Includes some certification that an applicant had consulted with the building commissioner. Prior to meeting with the um, prior to filing an application with the Board of Appeals. Um, you know, to my mind, that is more than just putting something on the application. It 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 also means that there's a requirement. That an applicant uh, actually meet with the building commissioner before um, before submitting an application to the Board of Appeals. Um, Barry and I discussed it a couple of weeks ago and, you know, he agreed to to drop that that request. Um, I want to make it clear that that doesn't mean that an applicant cannot consult with the building commissioner. Um, I would think that in more cases than not, that will be the, that will be the case. That, you know, before an applicant even knows that he or she must go to the board. Or have some notion that they must go to the board, they'll probably speak with the um, with the building commissioner. However, there's not a requirement. That an applicant, you know, do so. And I would hope that as applicants do me with the building commissioner. That those meetings are conducted quickly, uh, as informally as possible, and you provide. As as much assistance. In in helping them understand and um. Um. Create their application um, as as is possible. So. This is really not a change in how we've done business. For as long as I've been on the board and Dave, you've been on the board longer.
Yeah, no, it's not, and we I I think we've always done, I don't know if encouraged, but. I think of the individual homeowner type person and. You know, getting into one of these for the first time. You know, they would be wise to go talk to somebody that knows the system and that would be the building commissioner. Uh. The paper flow, uh, you know, explain what the done questions are, if they don't understand what's this question about, what's it mean? Mentor, I guess is the word I would use.
Yeah. But again, you know, for somebody that has a familiarity. You know, with the um, with the bylaw, um, you know, for example, an issue such as the one we had, you know, tonight with the uh, with the garage. Um. You know, but if they feel there's no need to meet with the building commissioner, then, you know, file with us. And obviously, if if Barry in reviewing the application or one of us in reviewing the application notes that there's some issue. Something in addition to um. To what is being requested is required, then we'll just get word to the applicant and handle the matter appropriately. Um. Next matter, I guess, is the minutes from the April fifteenth meeting? Any?
I move approval of the minutes from the April fifteenth meeting.
Second.
Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Um. Couple of other matters, sort of updating. Um, billboards. Um, thanks to the efforts of Lisa Barry. Um, and I guess Barry and, you know, Barry Ringo overseeing her on that. All of the bonds that we have required on past. Special sign permits for billboards. Are are now in in Town Hall. Um, I I don't know how many. She had to collect, but whatever she had to collect, she, you know, she has collected, so we're we're up to date on that, so. Appreciation for the efforts in that regard. Um. Media partners, uh, as you may remember, a couple of couple of months ago, we authorized a transfer of a billboard permit. From Metrovision to media partners. They've gotten the approval that they need from the outdoor advertising board. And as I understand from both Lisa and from Barry. They'll likely be in sometime in June for the.
Mid-June, yes.
And as Barry indicated to me the other day in in an email, I guess the some of the delay has been um. You know, COVID related, just not being able to get the steel pole.
That's right.
Yet they need for the construction. Um, so that. And and they they're aware of the bond. So uh, so we'll be up to date on that. Um, Lamar Advertising, in October of two thousand nineteen, we approved a special sign permit for a billboard for Lamar Advertising. Um. I think it's at one twenty four Washington Street. And according to, they have not moved forward with constructing the billboard. And according to what Lisa was, Lisa Barry was told. They may not do so. Um, they decided to be because of the coronavirus situation to um. You know, to wait and see. Um. But as of now, nothing, nothing has been done. I initially thought. That they had two years to construct something, but when I checked the bylaw earlier today, they only have one year. So there, in in essence, that permit has lapsed. We we can agree to reissue it. Um. With without a new application, um, but it's questionable as to whether they'll um, they'll come forward.
Isn't it a little? Isn't it a little late? I mean, I would think if they want, to me, you're talking about an extension, really.
Um, yeah, the way the bylaw reads, though, it it says it it lapses after one year. Let me get the exact language.
Barney, technically, wouldn't that have been under the state of emergency, which now expires June fifteenth?
You know, I I.
So everything was told?
So they. I I don't know, Diana. Honestly, I don't know. It's a good point. I I just don't know.
Yeah, we were, we were told that nothing, nothing would expire during the state of emergency. Everything would extend sixty days or ninety days past the end of the state of emergency, which is ending June fifteen.
So what the state of emergency was effective in March of two thousand. So what, the state of emergency was effective in March of two thousand twenty. The billboard was approved in October of two thousand nineteen. So when the state of emergency is lifted, they would then have what, basically seven months?
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know.
Well, I guess we'll only have to know if they show up looking for a permit, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Short period of time.
Well, we'll deal with it when and if it occurs. But that, that's a good point Diana, thank you. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for June thirtieth. So far, nothing in, Diana?
Nope, I don't have anything right now.
Okay, Barry, nothing with you? Um, we may, we, we, we may get a request, I guess Jeff Lopely's already left us, uh, we may get a request from Jeff for a modification on the Wyman Village comprehensive permit. Um, and that would be to determine whether it's substantial or, or insubstantial. Um, possible June thirtieth. Jeff seems to think it might be more likely that it'll be in um, in July or August.
Which one's Wyman Village?
That's the one off of uh, Community Way. I don't think you were on the board.
Well, that was before my time back again, but all right.
Yeah, uh, I think Neil forced it, uh, Kim and I were the ones who voted on that. Um, so that, that's a possibility com-coming up. My understanding is what they want to do is a, a, allow homeowners to screen in their, their decks or their porches. Um, and to allow homeowners to um, put roof-mounted solar um, systems, you know, on, on the roofs. Um, the decision itself prohibits any modification to those homes without first going to the board for determination. So that, that's a possibility um, coming up in June, perhaps more likely July or August. Um, going farther ahead, we've got the possibility of one and maybe two comprehensive permit applications later in the year. Um, this property on Moore Street that Mike Sage owns, and I know that he's going through the process right now, getting paperwork ready on, ready for that. My understanding is that would be a development of condominiums, maybe fifty to fifty-five. And the second one would be the Housing Authority um, on, on Walnut Street. And it's conceivable, I don't know, but it's conceivable that, that the two of them will overlap. You know, bear in mind that we're over the ten percent threshold, so that, that comes into play as well. We'll have to make decisions in that regard.
Doesn't that kind of thing have to go to the selectmen too, because we're over the threshold?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's what I always understood.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
That's the first step, I think.
Yeah, yeah. And, and my understanding as well is that the paperwork that would be necessary to go to the selectmen is in the process of being prepared. Um, it was suggested, it was suggested to me that if it lands on our desk, so to speak, it'll, it'll land probably late fall. Anybody has anything else?
Are we gonna meet in person, Barney, or?
I don't know Diana, what do you know?
My um, they said at the department head meeting that um, the state is giving the towns leeway on when they want to go back in person. Mike Johns has said that this town is under its own state of emergency. Um, so that will probably be rescinded about the same time, the June fifteenth date. And then hopefully, they'd let us back in to have meetings.
Would, would they limit the numbers, or, or it would just be following the state rule?
Uh, the state is not gonna limit anything, but I guess the town could if they wanted, but they, they ran into problems doing that, because, you know, if they limit it to twenty people and the twenty-first person isn't let in, is that denying public access?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And canceling the meeting.
Yeah, which would leave twenty people not happy.
Anybody have anything else?
Well, next time we do meet in person, uh, we can all go to the beer garden and I'm buying the first round.
Hey, second.
I, I, are you saying the motion, or you say you're gonna buy the second round?
The beer.
All right, so maybe we'll see everybody in June and maybe not. And, and if it goes through, if it goes through one without a meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out sometime for all of us to go down there.
Sounds good.
Yeah, test drive.
So I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Okay, thank you everybody.
Yeah, good night.
Take care.